Joking around.
I think we're on. Shall we wait?
Okay, I got an eye with it.
Recording in progress.
Okay, recording in progress.
All right. Six thirty-four.
Okay, so it's uh six thirty-four and want to announce that this is a meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. And the meeting's located at seven Main Street, Slate Building, but it's also held virtually. And I was told by the Select Board that we should still mention the order that allows us to meet virtually, so I'm gonna do that. By saying this Planning Board meeting is being held both in person and remotely pursuant to an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, which is a new order which was signed by extending it, which was signed by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Says the bill allows public bodies to elect to meet remotely, which we have. The chair and quorum of the public body are not required to be physically present at the specified meeting location. But public bodies that do elect to conduct open meetings on a remote basis must continue to enable members of the public with visual and audio access to meetings, which we have, I think, accomplished with some work here. Also, this meeting is broadcast live and digitally recorded. We do have members of the Planning Board that are physically present are myself, Alice Livedall, Bill Homans next to me on the computer screen. And members remotely are Francois Steiger. So, has John DiMaggio come yet? No?
No.
Okay, well, there's three members and that does constitute a quorum, so I'm I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I do know that Christopher Monroe could not be here, so I'm calling the meeting to order and declaring a quorum present.
The time right now is six thirty-six.
Yeah, and the time is six thirty-six. Okay, so we begin public meetings, uh, or the meeting, Planning Board meetings with a public comment period. We do not have anybody here uh sitting with us at the live meeting. Is there anybody? I know Bill, but he's uh not here to speak at the public session. He's our Planning Board advisor.
What's that box in the middle say?
Bo- what is the box in the middle say?
I don't know.
Okay. So I'm gonna move on. Our first um item of business is to approve some minutes. These are minutes from January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. I do have some corrections to the minutes, but we can move to I can why don't you, we'll move to approve and then I'll well, I'll, I'll tell you what the amendments are and people can decide if they wanna see another version of them, or I can give the written co- uh corrections to Mallory and we can vote him approved with those corrections. So, the minutes are, um, we do need to, with the under attendees, also include the virtual attendees. And I know at that meeting, and Mallory, you'll have to check the sign-in sheet, but I know Bill Murray was present from places at this meeting. So that's a correction on page one, other attendees, if you could check the others. And then, um, the whole old business section, I understand what she did. Take nothing away from this minute taker. It's her first try at trying to do the minutes to one of our meetings. But it has a number of corrections that need to be made, so I'll just read new old business in it, and then Mallory, I've already sent this to you. I know you were having glitches today. But it should read, uh, on the A and R Helfrey Road slash lot sixty-eight lots. Ms. Seaman stated that board member's signatures are still missing on this approved plan. That's how it should read. And then B accessory dwelling unit zoning by law. Uh, final revisions were discussed, including the elimination of a minimal rental term. The public hearing has been scheduled for two twenty-four. And then on the Nicole Weinland Thompson Fisher and Gregory Fisher twenty-eight George Howard Road proposal for a country club. She'd read, uh, Ms. Sally Mann was present representing the applicant. The board reviewed the town council opinion from KP Law written by attorney Jeffrey T. Blake, in which he concluded that the board could find that the applicant's proposal for Willow Hill Country Club could qualify as a country club under the Hubbardston zoning bylaws based on standard definition of country club, a term not defined in the zoning bylaw, based on proposed activities, facilities, and membership requirement. Applicant proposed annual membership fee of three thousand dollars for a party of four with an option to add members to the unit for five, she put five thousand, I believe it's supposed to be five hundred dollars. Board members present expressed agreement with the town council's opinion but did not take any formal action due to only three members being present and the need to review details in special permit application. So Mallory, I've sent that to you, but you understand, right, the correction? And then I think there was one correction on the third page.
I had a quick question on this here, but you have a moment?
Nope, that's it. I think the oh, yes, on the affordable housing, just a minute. Um, on the second paragraph, it should read, uh, Ms. Livedall uh and the local project committee are working to, on fundraising ideas. Uh, Ms. Livedall noted another request, no change, that's the change, or fundraising ideas. Don't put with her daughter. I mean, we discussed a lot of things and that wasn't particularly, so that's it. You have another correction?
Another correction, a quick question, if I may?
Yep.
Old business appears twice here, and it's, uh, there's a new business in between them. Do we go back and forth into old business and new business, or can we just simply consolidate everything under old business?
Oh. Okay, let's then move new biz- the new business in front, new business always should precede old business. So let's just move the new business paragraphs up ahead of old business.
Yep.
Okay.
Consolidate these old businesses together.
Together, right. All right, so Mallory, I've got, I did send you that except for Bill, um, Francois's corrections. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept these minutes with those corrections read.
I wasn't present.
You can vote anyway, if you read them.
Right, so I did read them.
So you can second it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Uh, uh, so you made, you made the motion?
And it's been, yeah, and it's been seconded.
Yep.
Uh, all in favor, Livedall, aye?
Homans aye.
Steiger aye?
Okay, that's corrected. Thanks, thanks. I'm really actually very glad to have minutes going again. We're quite far behind. Okay, so then the next article of business is we have a public hearing. And it was published in the paper, and I need to read it into the record. So it reads as follows, public hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven. The Hubbardston Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Hubbardston Town Hall, Slate Building, seven Main Street, Hubbardston, Mass, zero one four five two, or by virtual means on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M to review the proposed changes to Hubbardston zoning bylaws. Article two, definition to include changes to two point one accessory building building and stru- or structure and two point two accessory use. Elimination of definition, two point three seven in-law apartment and two point three eight accessory apartment with a new proposed definition for accessory dwelling unit. The Planning Board will also be reviewing, be reviewing the proposed article to be included in the zoning bylaws for accessory dwelling units. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should submit comments in writing to the Hubbardston Planning Board at seven Main Street, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, zero one four five two, or attend the public hearing. Draft of the proposed changes may be viewed at, and then there's the, uh, the site for that. So, I guess the first thing is Mallory, have you, we heard, had any comments come in either by email or writing on this bylaw?
I am not having.
Okay, so then
Nothing.
Um, this is a public hearing, so I, I think that I should run through it quickly for the public.
You have the vote to open, give the vote to open the hearing.
Oh, okay, can I have a vote to open the hearing?
I'll make that mo- uh, motion to have the open the hearing.
I am seconding the motion.
All in favor, Livedall, aye?
Homans aye.
Steiger aye.
Okay, thanks, Mallory, for reminding me.
Thanks for a reminder of the procedures here.
Yeah.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The, uh, latest copy of the accessory dwelling, are they up on our SharePoint site? The reason I'm asking is because the last one that I am seeing are the ones that were posted on Jan. sixth. I'm sorry, on Jan. fourth, uh, under the Jan. sixth folder. I'm assuming there's been some changes since then, right?
There have been changes, and Mallory, did you get a chance to update that?
I've not, I haven't gotten any of the emails.
Okay, we had we had a, um we've, we've had to the public as well, uh, some issues. Both, both with Mallory being absent to care for her daughter for the past week, and then there was problems with my getting email. That was being sent to the town server but out to her remotely today. So, but the accessory dwelling unit by law, um, as posted, what, it is posted as it was originally shown, and then we reviewed it and made some revisions.
Can we just?
Which we can incorporate tonight, and then and I think still vote on it. So I was gonna run through it to the public. So it's basically, and there's some other things that, some in the original published version, I also stated there are other amendments needed to be made to like the use provision. So I'm gonna run through this, and then if you feel uncomfortable not voting on it, um, you know, we can take it up. But to the public listening, yep.
I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the, 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 the one that is posted on the website, which is the proposed changes, accessory dwelling units, is indeed the latest, latest version that we are going to be discussing tonight, correct?
Is it published in the is it published in the notes for to, in the documents for tonight?
I'll check.
Cause I don't think it is. I think that
The latest copy that I got was the, the January one. I haven't gotten any amended ones from you, Alice.
Well, January, what, it was amended in January.
Right, right. I haven't gotten any at one time, so that's the most current one that we have, or I have. I know you made some changes back.
Okay.
I haven't gotten that. Did you send that to the whole board or did?
To everybody. Oh, that's right, I sent it out to everybody.
So they should have gotten it.
In an email.
So, I wonder
Cause Mallory was having posting trouble.
Nobody's getting it.
You should have gotten
Well, did you get that in your email or something?
I did not.
I checked mine, I think.
Last email I received from Alice, uh, Livedall is on February the seventh.
So the email breakdown must have been my server at home.
And there's, this link won't work for your accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, and what if you go to the link? Page not found.
Unless it's this right here, is this it?
Try it.
This is draft.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
And where was that? That was published in?
This is on
There was the published one on the website?
Yes.
All right, this is, okay, this is from one seven twenty-two, published on the website.
Okay.
And that is fairly accurate. I think it's almost entirely accurate, as a matter of fact. That's the one we voted on, one seven twenty-two. So it's on the website if you need to look at it.
Yep.
Okay, so, so I wanna just go through it, um, to, to just address the public that may be listening is our what this bylaw is doing is we are consolidating uh and defining, um, the the, these accessory dwelling issues that have been floating around for a long time. Presently, the current bylaw allows an, uh, in-law apartment in all districts and an accessory apartment by special permit only. And the in-laws of apartments is very limited to relatives. And the accessory apartment, you can't add on unless you have lived, had the house up five years. So, what we wanna do is we wanna create in recognition that these units are not always occupied by relatives and that even families aren't necessarily relatives these days. And open up housing and to open up some rental options and to open up actually some, um, short rental options too. So, our new article is the accessory, accessory dwelling units, that's what we're calling it. And just to run through it very quickly, the new definition is a group of rooms located within or attached to an owner occupied single-family residence or above a garage of a single-family residence consisting of a kitchen, bathroom, and bedrooms which are used as a separate apartment for a limited number of occupants. Occupants may include relatives, dependents, and guests of owners, caregivers, nannies, and other service providers to owners or tenants. And then we have this article that goes on and describes it in detail. Basically, to run through it, these accessory dwelling units would be allowed in all zoning districts. Presently, they're not allowed in the town center district at all. Uh, accessory dwelling units are allowed only as part of a owner occupied, single-family residence. There can only be only one dwelling unit per resident, one accessory dwelling unit per house. The accessory dwelling unit, this bylaw can be lo- uh, applies to units both entirely within the walls of an existing house or as an addition or, or a hybrid of that, some taken out of the original house in an addition. It can be bar- also built as part of a new, single-family residence. And it can be located above a garage of an owner occupied, single-family residence. If, um, it can, and those are allowed as of right except in two situations. One of which would be if the single-family residence is on a non-conforming lot or if the proposed accessory apartment is above a detached garage. In those two cases, you would have to seek a special permit in order for it to be granted. Size and occupancy restrictions are a thousand square feet is the maximum size the unit can be. It cannot have more than two bedrooms, it cannot house more than four people. And the owner of the single-family residence must reside either in the single-family residence or in the accessory dwelling unit for at least five months per year. The, uh, accessory dwelling unit has to have, and the house together, have to maintain the appearance of a single-family residence. They have to be connected by a common wall, a breezeway is insufficient. Exterior stairways have to be located in the back or side of the structure. The same driveway must serve both the single-family and the accessory dwelling unit. Two additional off-street parking spaces must be provided, and they cannot be in the front yard setback or on the driveway. And a septic system must be correctly sized and, and well to serve a to serve the additional occupants of the accessory dwelling units. So in a nutshell, that's what it provides. The changes that need to be made are, um, to the following provisions, accessory building and structure, we're just adding a note of this new provision, accessory use, the same thing, we're adding a note to let people know that additional restruc- restrictions apply if your accessory structure happens to be an accessory dwelling unit. We're eliminating the definition of in-law apartment, we're eliminating the definition of accessory apartment, which presently exist in favor of the one I just read. And then we're, we're revising the permit table, uh, so that, um, accessory dwelling units are allowed in all residential districts. Again, by right, unless you need a special permit because your lot is undersized, your frontage is inadequate, it doesn't meet zoning, or you're proposing to put it above a detached garage. And also presently, accessory dwelling units are not allowed by right in the town center district. This would allow them. It's the same as in the other residential districts. And with the same restriction. Uh, presently, uh, it's a just a odd fact of our zoning bylaws, but basically our zoning bylaws have pyramid, pyramid structure, so that what's allowed in the least, in the most restrictive zone is allowed in every subsequent zone. So there are, so they incorporate these uses from the previous level, and that happened in the commercial zone, but for some reason the town center was excluded from that. But we think the town center district would want an option to have accessory apartments. They have some of the biggest houses in town. Okay, so that's it. Um, there's all those couple of changes. What was deleted in the last, uh, session of the Planning Board, and I think it is posted correctly, was there is no, uh, parking on the driveways, we made that specific, and we did not have a rental term limit. So you can rent, there is no rental term limit. This allows people to use their accessory apartment as a air, as a Airbnb rental or short stay on some of the other platforms, which was very, very important and lobbied for by the, um, E D C, the Economic Development Committee and the Select Board. Okay, any questions from the public hearing on this, from our members of the public listening? Anybody called in, Mallory?
Uh, I don't see any hands up.
Okay, ma- ma- comments from members of the board, otherwise then I'll close the public hearing, but I wanna make sure we finally have it right.
I have no comments.
Comments?
I don't mind, thank you.
Okay.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Motion, yep.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing? You gotta ask for comment.
I second.
Okay.
I second the motion.
So the main, seconded to close the public hearing, Livedall, aye?
I'm second. Steiger, aye?
And Ho- Homans, aye.
Okay, thank you all. I'll make sure that the most updated, those last changes that are worked in make it to, uh well, make it over to David, so it makes it on the warrant correctly, right?
Right, right, right.
It's big, it's been a big effort to get that done. Okay, so now we have two A and Rs before us. They've actually, uh, I reviewed them, you've probably all reviewed them, they're online. Uh, I do not have the, the MyLars here to sign tonight, but I think we can approve them based on the virtual copies. And I have also sent them, I sent them to Bill to review. But again, for the listening public, the first one is a permit that was submitted by the Allards. And it involves, it's an interesting, it was submitted by, uh, John Farnsworth. He's the engineer involved. And it involves transferring some land from an existing lot that the Allards owned to another lot which the Allards also own. So, and if you look at the, uh, the, the plan in the notes, and the weather.
You have another package here.
Why what?
You have another package?
Oh, no, you can share with me.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, if you're looking at the one online, which is also posted, there's a big plan and then there's a blow-up of where the actual lot is. And you can see from the big plan, these are big lots out on, um, Healdville Road.
Oh, sorry.
And so, the, the, where it exists now, the red part, or the, uh, that's red on this plan. The top part that projects into lot B, in this part of part A, is being transferred from the back of A to, the, uh, the back of A is being transferred to parcel B. The result is pretty obvious, otherwise it leaves parcel B being sort of an H-shaped lot that wraps around this land. So it does make some, some sense that they do that. I'm just gonna tear off my cheeky here. So, you can look at it. So when it's, when it's done, it doesn't alter any frontage. All it does is alter the area of lots A and B. Lot A has a house on it already, and it is a five-acre lot, which will be reduced to two and a half acres roughly. And those two and a half acres will be added to lot B, which will then become a twenty point five acre parcel. So I did go through our, as I'm sure Bill did too, our twelve-point checklist, and everything is on this, except, everything is on this. His statement about no wetlands is a little different than the usual statement. But I did also check the excess G I S, and there is no wetland on this property to be, piece to be transferred. So, Bill, is there anything I've forgotten? I know he's there.
Oh, this, we have a new gentleman up, is that?
He may be, I'm not listening.
I think he's trying to talk.
Alice, I think you got it all.
Okay, so questions from the three board members?
I don't have any.
If not, somebody wanna make a motion to approve this A and R plan?
I will make that motion, Bill Homans.
Okay.
I'm seconding motion, motion for Steiger.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing done, we'll vote, Livedall, aye?
Homans, aye.
Steiger.
Okay.
Steiger, aye?
Okay, so I have a question that's gonna apply to the second plan as well, which is, are people gonna be around? Well, I don't, you gonna be around this weekend? I, I might drive it around to try to get signatures. Look for messages from Mallory or from me.
We'll see how the stall goes.
Francois, you're in California, or are you home?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm back, but, uh, we're expecting quite a lot of stuff, so.
Well, it'll be like uh, maybe we should
Alice, you should, you should probably text me or send me an email from your personal email, cause I'm not getting your emails from the Hubbardston server.
What happened to Hubbardson's? Apparently, nobody else is either, so what happened to that? Hello, who's in the middle there that wants to?
This gentleman?
Yes.
Uh, John Farnsworth.
Oh, hi, John, your name, I do recognize you, you're, you know, you're a little bitty on my screen. Yeah, we're, we're, we just approved it. The question is how to get our signatures on it for and get it to you.
Well, uh, I have the MyLar right here, and I would be happy to drop it up either Friday or Monday to the town hall. And you could come and, uh, well, Mallory can, you know, just, you can sign at your convenience and uh, either J D or I'll come back and pick up the plan, and we'll take it to the registry and record it.
Okay, that's wonderful. You drop it off. Uh, Mallory, you're not gonna be in on Monday, right? Or we should
Is she there?
Is she there?
Hold on, Mr. Murray wants to say something.
Monday?
Monday. Are you gonna be in the office or somebody?
Yeah, I'll be there for, at least part of the day, but the town clerk should be there.
Okay, so if John drops off the plan on Monday.
If one of us isn't in the office, then he can drop it off with the tax collector as well.
Okay, and you can tell who's ever there to let us in to sign it, right? If you're not there?
Yeah, of course.
Um, great, great. So John, drop it off, and then Mallory, as soon as it's there, you wanna send us all an email? To come in and sign it?
Yeah, I'll handle it.
Okay, Bill's got a que- Bill's got a question. Bill?
Yeah, just a reminder, uh, Mr. Farnsworth, they need paper copies as well for their records, a minimum of three.
Yeah, we have the paper copies, we can drop the MyLar.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration. Have a, have a wonderful blizzard.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks a lot, yeah, all right. All right, on to our second A and R plan, which is, uh, plan of a lot on Gardner Road, submitted by the Valleys, and once again, they own, they're carving out a lot of their own land. So it's not a different owner. So, they have owned this house for, owned this land for a long time. It's a really old deed reference in here.
Yep, they've been there a long time.
Uh, but in their new plan, they've created, they've carved out of their big parcel of land, which is about ten acres, a little bit less. They've carved out an eighty thousand square foot lot with three hundred and twenty-seven degree, uh, feet of frontage on Gardner Road. And it leaves the, a lot, the remaining seven point three acre back lot, but it also has frontage. Just two hundred feet of frontage on the road, so it can only be one, one house lot. But otherwise, it does again, meet all the criteria in the checkbox. Um, except that it doesn't show, well, the other plan didn't either. We have a rule that says you're supposed to do uh, setback inside yard designations from existing buildings, but we don't enforce it when it's very obvious that you're nowhere near the thirty feet, it's a hundred feet or more.
And there's nothing really there either.
Right, right, well, this, this house doesn't.
That's the only house.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the plan. There's no, nothing unconventional about it or that doesn't meet our requirements. And I'll, and Bill, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I see that somebody named Jay Valley is online. Just a quick question is, do they know what septic in their well are?
Oh, okay. Is Mr. Valley there? Can you unmute him, Mallory, and let him answer that?
You should be able to unmute him.
Jay, Jay Valley. Can you unmute yourself and answer our expert's question here on the location of your septic system and well?
Um, on, on, in, in the current residence? Or where the plan? Um, yeah, they're marked. I mean, we had it in our T Shion well drilled a long time ago. I can't really, I, no, I can't give you, I don't, I'm not looking for, but
Are they on your newly proposed, so the house exists? You have existing septic and you have the sixes, existing well. Are they on the lot that the house is proposed to stay on?
Oh, yes.
Yes. There's a small little X, it's very, very small, a lot A.
Yeah, it, it shows the well, I believe.
And in the legend, the, the legend, the legend does indicate that is the well, believe me?
Oh, that's the garage.
I don't believe there is any indication I don't believe there is any indications to the septic itself, though.
Okay, that's, it's, it's their requirement to, to make sure that those things happen, but it's always worth asking.
No, no, they're, they're certainly gonna be included in property with the house that's going to stay in the family, so we're gonna keep the current residence in the minimum amount, amount of property with that house, which will include the well and the septic, and we're just trying to break off the remaining, the remaining acreage to sell as a separate building lot, like you just, like you just stated, so.
Jay, Bill Holman's, where, approximately, where is the well, the septic system in regards to the house and the well that we can see on the map here?
It's behind the house, it's, so if you look at the house, it would be towards the sand pit.
So if I'm looking at the house from.
I, I don't know, I don't have the map, but.
If I'm looking at the house, you got on the road, standing right in front of it, as your driveway goes up, on the left-hand side goes up the hill, where is the septic system in regards at, to the right?
To the right of the house.
Okay, it's on the other side of the division, yeah.
On the other side of the house, so it's, it's trapped in, it's, everything's included in the, in the current lot.
It would just have to be shown on, I don't know how we'd handle that tonight, but normally we request that to be on the plan that we accept and approve. Um, is that something we can ask in our?
Can we accept this plan tonight without it being shown, Bill? Is this something we have to ask it?
It's on in your regulations.
Okay, it is.
It's the, I think, it's the applicant's responsibility, but it's always worth asking.
Okay, and then.
Cause they would need an easement or whatever.
Okay, and one last question to Jay, is, uh, you, you have a driveway that you're gonna relocate, right? It shows on this plan, cause it otherwise would clip the corner of the new lot?
Correct, I mean, we, all we have to do is, is curl the driveway down, you know, a little bit sooner than, than it currently does, um, when it meets sixty-eight, so there's plenty of room to do that. Um, there's also an older driveway we used to use that goes right from the house.
Down there, down there.
Uh, right, almost directly down to sixty-eight, that could be, that we could utilize if we did some work to it.
Just be careful of that tree that's hanging in front of it. Jay, be careful of the tree that's hanging out there by sixty-eight, it's in the nook of another tree, and it looks like it's gonna come down if somebody goes over there. I'm kidding you.
Right.
There is a tree, I know, it's hung up there, so you have no guardrail issues in front of this house, right?
No.
It's not a part of sixty-eight that's got the guardrails, okay.
Guardrails are up here.
All right.
No, no.
Okay, I guess for the listening public, their, their law is just across from Ben's Pond at the Gardner end of it.
Well, it's northbound from the pond.
Northbound from the pond, right, so, um, any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve it?
I'll make, I'll make that motion to approve.
Give me the motion to, to approve the Valley's plan?
Lots forty-six and forty-eight, oh, excuse me, lot sixty-three.
Yep. Bill, you want a second?
Are you, are you completed? Okay, in that case, I would second the motion, I just wanted to make sure that everything was completed.
Yes. Okay, um, any further discussion?
No, I don't have any.
Hearing none, we'll vote, lift all eye?
Schneider, eye.
Holman's eye.
Okay, and Mr. Ma- uh, do we, or I should ask Mallory, do you have the Mylar ready for this in the office?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so everybody on the planning board, we gotta get in, when you go, sign both of them.
Okay.
Right? So we'll try to get it done this week for you.
Next one, next one.
Next week, next week.
Actually, I won't be able to do it this week, next week.
Next week.
Next week.
I will, I will be there next week, not this week.
Yes, I know, we're all gonna be buried in snow this week, yeah, in the offices of course.
Absolutely.
Okay, next week, we'll, uh.
Chris and John signed too, if needed.
Okay, moving right along, the next item on, uh, any further things, Jay, you want to say?
Thank you, I just want, yeah, I just wanna say thank you very much for your help, and, yeah, we, whether it's signed this week or next week, the, it's not a rush for us, I mean, we're just trying to plan and, and figure everything out. Um, I don't know if, if people really, I know Bill, Bill knew my parents and my family, but, you know, they both passed away last, um, last year, and it's, uh, you know, we're just trying to get it, get all our affairs in order here, so, I appreciate all your help, thank you.
Glad to see you're doing good, Jay, take care.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we, we're sorry for the death of your parents, that's sad, okay.
Yeah.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I have, the next item on the agenda was Clayton Edwards to discuss the right to farm bylaw, he was working with Alison Muirhead, which was, if you may recall, they've appeared at a couple of meetings for the, uh, George Howard Lane Lot, and I received a note from her today that says, hello, I do apologize for the last minute notification, we will not be attending tonight, as the seller has accepted a different offer. Please excuse our request, thank you, Alison. So, I don't know, have no idea whether they're listening, but we're gonna pass over the article and thank them for their interest in, in Hubbardston and wish them well. So, going on to the next article, and I'm hoping that Mr.
Schmidt.
Schmidt has joined us, has he? Mallory?
I don't see him on the screen.
I'm just promoting.
Okay, okay. There he is, Damon.
Goodbye, Alison, love.
There, I see his name.
I see your name, but let's have him on mute and say hello, so we know we've got. Damon, are you there, Damon Schmidt? And whether Mallory's having trouble promoting him, or he's just muted, or what the story is.
He is promoted.
I wanna make sure he can hear us, Damon, can you hear?
All right, I can hear you.
Okay, very good, okay, so, uh, Damon requested to be at this meeting to discuss, he want, what he wants to put in. He, uh, I should let people know, the property address is, um, sixty-nine Gardner Road, for which we approved a special permit last year for our first, uh, well, first or second, depending, they were sort of running together, um, outdoor grow marijuana facility at that location. And what, uh, Damon wants to do, Mr. Schmidt wants to do, is to add a thirty-four by ninety-six foot, uh, agricultural cold frame greenhouse type structure. And he sent a plan showing its location, which, uh, which is in the notes, and then he also sent, which I did not, was that successful at getting posted today, but I might be able to pick it up, a picture of the greenhouse structure.
Look up in the screen.
Look up here?
Look up on the, put it, put it where you had it.
Put it where I have it.
Turn, turn your head to the right.
There you go.
There you go.
I don't know, is that visible?
I can see it.
Can you see it? Okay, they, the, I asked him, uh, this, um, well, you know, for some more details about it. So what, you know, and asked him whether it'd be a permanent structure or a temporary structure, what the story was with this. And so he sent me this picture, and it's clearly a a, a pla- a plastic cover, would that be right, Damon, some kind of plastic?
Yeah.
Uh, skin on it.
Yeah, plastic sheathing.
Plastic sheathing, and um, it's, it's a temporary building, it's not a permanent building, and I understand that our building inspector has said it doesn't require a building permit to put it up. And, uh, again, Damon, your eventual plans are, this is to, to basically propagate these seeds and get them growing, right? And then they're gonna be transplanted outside?
Yeah, yeah, so for this year, um, kind of our, our, our rush, I guess, is we, um, you know, will start between forty-five and fifty thousand plants, greenhouses, and they'll probably stay there for maybe two, three weeks, uh, and then we'll start transplanting them outside.
Okay, and then eventually, will the propagation be done in your, your, uh, a, um, permanent building as phase two?
So, you know, hopefully we do put up a six thousand square foot permanent building. Um, and our propagation, if we did it in that building, you know, would really consist of starting the seeds and then getting them into their trays. Um, and then, you know, at some point, we would have to move those aside into one of the greenhouses, you know, if we had more than one greenhouse up. Uh, in this case, we have one greenhouse.
Yep.
Um, so that many, you know, seeds to, to plant fifty thousand square feet, um, you know, when they're starting, it's gonna be about two thousand square feet. Uh, um, and then, you know, we, we need the sunlight, you know, for lights.
Yep.
Um, so we can start a bit in, in a real structure, but eventually, you know, they would move into a greenhouse type structure. Uh, and then from there, they would move out into the fields.
Okay, but, so do you, I guess my question is, I'm not sure it's terribly important, but you've, this issue of whether this is a permanent structure or not in terms of duration of use, it seems like it's a temporary structure, it doesn't have foundation, it's plastic, right? So is your, your thinking is that it may be, you're gonna keep a building of this sort for a number of years, but it may not be this building? Because of the durability of it, or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, these aren't buildings that are made to last, you know, twenty, thirty years.
Yep.
Um, you know, we'll take the, uh, the plastic up and down as necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, in a perfect world, we would just leave the plastic up year round, so we don't have to take it up and down. Um, but eventually, that plastic, you have to replace every couple of years, um, you know, if you do keep it up.
Okay, well, anyway, I sent this over based on the information you provided, and sort of our discussions back and forth to Mr. Murray to take a look at, and to see, to see whether we could, uh, rather than have you go through the special permit process, do a modification to the permit, the special permit that exists um, on the grounds that it is a temporary structure. Um, and it's, it doesn't really have a foundation, and that you don't need a building permit to put one up. Um, and, uh, based on the location, on the site plan that you provided, which does show it being located, see if I can. I always have to look at this, back in the corner of the commercial.
We won't even see it from the road.
It's back in the co- the corner of the commercially zoned area, right? Is that where you plan to have it, where it was shown, again?
Yeah, there's, there's two locations where you can have it, so, you know, I'm flexible on either one, but that, that is the one that's, you know, a hundred percent in the commercial zone.
Yep.
That's what you look at, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm gonna let Bill address this, I, I talked to him a little bit about it, but it was very sort of late this afternoon. Um, what do you think, can we, can we do this? Bill, you wanna talk about it a little bit?
Sure.
Tell him what you told me.
The, the way I see it is, if going for a modification of the special permit.
Guys, I'm on the computer.
Then, then that's gonna require a re-advertising and a reopening of the public hearing. And, and going through that whole rigmarole. Um, and that is in fact what Mr. Schmidt has asked for. And I think that the planning board needs, needs to make a very simple determination, whether this is a significant change or not. Uh, I, I think that because our, and I explained this to Alice, that our zoning bylaw defers almost completely to what's allowed and not allowed under the Cannabis Control Commission rules and regulations. So they do allow for this, um, the host community agreement notes that it, it's an allowed use. And I personally spoke with Roland Jean, who, who confirmed that the building permit is not required for this structure as proposed. So really, I don't.
We don't need to do anything.
The planning board needs to make determination as to whether you think this is a significant change or not, because it's my recommendation that this is a minor engineering change to a permit, and that what he's proposing is allowed uh, by the Cannabis Control Regulations, by the Host Community Agreement, it's a temporary structure. And as long as he doesn't have lights and doesn't have any, any serious infrastructure in there, then I think it's just a minor change to the permit that's existed, and you can vote on it with a simple majority tonight. But if members of the planning board think that this is a significant change, then you're gonna have to go out to advertise and public hearing. Uh, so that's really where I think that you've got two real straightforward options to deal with this tonight, you can just say it's a minor change.
Can I make a motion?
And make a motion and vote, or if it's a modification of the special permit, and we have to through the whole special permit process, including a super majority vote.
So I took this.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Bill wants to make a motion, this is some.
I'd like to make a motion to approve modification to the special permit which we granted to Royal Sun Farm to operate an outdoor grow marijuana establishment at sixty-nine Gardner Road as a minor engineering change to allow the addition of a temporary thirty-four by ninety-six agricultural cold frame greenhouse type structure that has a roof made of plastic, does not have a concrete slab foundation, and does require, does not require a building permit to put, to be put up. To be located as shown on the temporary site plan submitted by Bulbik Engineering.
I think I, so, if we wanna do it, that's the motion that's been made. I guess I can second that motion, and then we can have further discussions.
Um, Jay, I will second the motion, but I would like to open up with some questions.
Okay. It's been made and seconded, and Francois, ask your questions.
So, uh, question, uh, so again, can you, uh, Damon, can you clarify for me, this structure will be utilized solely for the purposes of, uh, starting your seedlings, or will it be used for anything else?
Well, for this year, our intention is to use it just for seedlings, um, uh, eventually, what we'd like to do is use it to, uh, increase our, you know, harvests. Um, so, you know, I'd, I'd like to be able to get a, you know, a, a planting in there, you know, second week of February next year. Uh, and then we could have a harvest in, in, um, in May. And there's a chance that we could try to have a planting in October and harvest in December. Um, but that's a little, uh, kind of a little aggressive with the sun going down. So at some point, we'd like to, you know, uh, you know, use the greenhouse for the shoulder seasons, which are, you know, what these greenhouses are meant for. But for this year, you know, our, our primary use is just gonna be to start the seedlings. Um, you know, we might try to grow in there in the summer, uh, but I think we might just take the top off for the summer and then put it back up. Does that answer you? So I'm kind of all over the, all, all over the board on that question, but, you know, eventually, we would like to, you know, have an extra harvest out of that greenhouse if we can.
Okay, because that, that was not mentioned earlier, and that's what I wanted to give some clarification, so it does appear that you would like to utilize this here for uh, things other than just, uh, 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 getting your seedlings started, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's a waste of space if we don't do something with it, you know?
Well, it's not wasted, because you're actually using it, you're using it during that period of time, the next question I had is, is that, how does your, how does your, uh, how does your irrigation, uh, factor in for this particular space? Cause I know a real issue at, at some point in time, and I understand that you're trying to address it through different means, but I'm trying to understand where your wells are and where this particular location is, as to how it is that you would, uh, you would irrigate this area.
Yeah, so, for fifty thousand plants, they would be in, um, if you've ever seen a seedling tray, it's, you know, two feet long by a foot wide with fifty, you know, holes in there. Uh, so we would use a thousand of those trays, and then those trays would either be up on the ground, or possibly, we can try to elevate them on some, um, on something. But then we'll be hand watering them, so we don't have any plans, you know, to put any specific irrigation in there for the seedlings, just gonna be, you know, hand watering. Um, our irrigation for the field, just kinda to give you a bigger answer, you know, it's done with drip, with drip lines.
Well, that, 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 that was just my question, so you're basically, you're basically indicating that, and, and you've answered the question, so you're basically saying is, is this will be hand irrigated, but using a, uh, the well, the well water that is sourced from wherever the well is that you have, uh, and in, on your map, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you do not intend of using anything other than that hand, uh, that, that hand, uh, irrigation? What about in the future, if you want to put a full, uh, uh, when you want to put a full, uh, uh, when, when you wanna use, utilize that facility in full for, uh, in, in full force for, uh, your shoulder seasons?
Uh, then, you know, what we could use is, uh, a smaller, like drip line system that would be fully enclosed in the greenhouse. Um, you know, you'd run into problems with the, uh, the winter, so our tank is outside, uh, that we're using for the general field. So we probably have to use a smaller tank inside the building.
Gotcha.
In that way, you know, it wouldn't freeze, but, yeah, do you like a small drip lines we would use?
Okay, do you have any need for any special chemicals when you start these, uh, seedlings, like for example fertilizer or herbicides or pesticides or anything of that nature?
No, no, we, we don't, just straight water, just when they start.
Okay, so there's no, there's, so in that, in this, in this structure, you do not intend to store anything? Okay, so there's no, there's, so in that, in this, in this structure, you do not intend to store anything, but. Uh, I, I'm assuming must be tools or, uh, loam or some other material that basically is where you're going to be planting these, uh, seedlings in?
Yeah, so I, I, I think, you know, we have something in our, in our special permit or somewhere, it says that we're gonna keep all of our, uh, our nutrients and everything in the shed. So, you know, anything that we would need, we would, you know, be in the shed for nutrients and stuff.
And I just wanna make sure that that is indeed still the case, including for these particular, uh, seedlings, right?
Yep.
Okay, so this particular facility will not ever be used for storing anything other than the, uh, the, uh, the plants themselves or the seedlings?
Yeah, in terms of chemicals and everything, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, at some point, like I said, if we had a enclosed, um, drip line system, you know, we'd have to go, you know, bring them from the storage shed and put them in. You know, the drum or, or the tote that, you know, they would be mixed with water.
Okay.
Like, in terms of actually what you're asking stored, we won't store anything in the greenhouse.
Will there be any need for you to augment the CO2, uh, production in that particular greenhouse for the purposes of, um? Making sure that these seedlings get a higher concentration of CO2?
No.
Okay. Madam Chair, I've asked my questions, I will just raise some concerns that I have here, I mean, I think that fact is is that. Yes, it will be used for seedlings as it has been stated, but it could potentially be used for other things in the future. I just wanna make sure that we have some form of stipulations within the granting of this additional change. So that it does stay within the parameters as stated by, uh, David Schmidt during this, uh, during this conversation we just met with him. And I don't know if we can do that as such, so Bill, I mean, I'm kind of waiting for you to, cause we say it's a minor change, which I would agree, but it's only a man, minor change as long as it stays within those parameters.
You consider whatever per, whatever parameters you mutually agree on, the applicant and the board.
So I, I would say at this point, I mean, this is kind of like the way I am thinking of this here, is it has to stay within the parameters that the structure will be utilized. Solely for the, for, for, for the cultivation and, and the starting of seedlings, uh, in year one. And that any future use for, say for example, expanded growth would be only utilized in such a manner that it does. So, you know, it, with the specifications of what we have just discussed here, mainly that, uh, the irrigation will be limited to drip, uh, to drip irrigation. And that there will be no storage of anything other than, uh, the, the material that is used to, to, uh, uh, to bed these, uh, plants. And to not store any kind of chemicals or anything else that would be considered outside of that.
And may I suggest no artificial grow light, I mean, they're gonna need lights perhaps, but you do not have much, this to do with.
That's another good question, I mean, and I, is, uh, do you intend to put any electrical, uh, any electrical, uh?
I think that was mentioned before.
Either appliances or anything else, like the lights or anything of that nature there, uh, David?
So for an out, outdoor grow, uh, you're only allowed to use lights, uh, when the plants are in their immature stage.
These aren't gonna be immature, right?
Yeah, so you're only allowed to use them basically up to about eight inches tall. Um, but we have no plans on putting lights in, in the greenhouse, um, which is, which is not built up for that electrical drop, um.
Got you, okay, so I, I, and you would be okay with us stating that, that is, that this, this particular facility as right now. Described will not contain any lights, correct?
Uh, no grow lights because they're mainly.
Grow lights, uh, that's, yes, grow lights, grow lights.
Um, yeah, we could do that, I mean, that might, you know, change in the future, but this, you know, but we'll have another, for the building, we'll have another special permit out.
I under, I understand that you're coming in with a minor modification, which I think is fine, as long as we stay within parameters. And I just wanna make sure that those parameters are the ones that we are specifying and that we're all agreeing on.
Yeah, yeah, we won't, we won't put any grow lights in that, that greenhouse.
Right, good.
So, so why?
Madam Chair, I think.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest the amendment.
Go ahead.
All right, so I was gonna suggest that we, I was gonna make a amendment, hopefully a friendly amendment to the motion that's already on the floor. That we add the following provisions, um, provided that, uh, where cultivation is limited to seedlings for this growing season. Uh, that, uh, irrigation will be through a drip system. That there'll be no chemicals stored in the building and there will be no artificial grow lights installed in the building. Does that hit it all?
Can I just, can I, I just say that this season and you can bring it to twenty twenty-two?
That is correct, yes, I was conscious, it's the same thing.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I, I would just, I would wanna add to that because, so we can't lose, you know, twenty-two thousand square feet of canopy. So, I mean, our, our intention is to, you know, start the fifty thousand plants in, in the greenhouse. And then we're gonna end up with forty-five thousand plants in the field, but there might be a thousand plants in that greenhouse, like.
Okay, so, so Damon, this greenhouse.
The question that I have is, am I gonna take off the, you know, am I gonna take off the plastic, cause it's gonna be too hot in there, or am I gonna leave the plastic on? But that footprint, you know, is, we're gonna either plant in the ground, or we might just put it in pots in the greenhouse.
Which is part of the original plan, wasn't it?
Um, but I don't, I don't wanna lose the space is what I'm saying, just by starting, you know, the greenhouse is in the middle of our field.
Which is part of the original.
Okay, so the greenhouse area was originally in the cultivation area that we agreed to in the special permit, right?
Yeah.
And it's inside the fence. Okay, so, I mean, that does make some sense to me, that we, that he, once he gets his seedlings out, if he wants to leave. A percentage of them in to mature to full plants.
And then water them.
That, that does seem reasonable if he was able, if he would have been able to plant the plants there in the first place, right? But we've made him put the greenhouse there, so maybe we wanna strike that restriction and just say, um.
For marijuana use is previously allowed.
I didn't hear that, Bill, it was very garbled.
Allowed cultivation.
So cultivation of.
Marijuana cultivation previously allowed.
Okay, cultivation of seedlings and marijuana cultivation is previously allowed.
Right.
Is allowed in the special permit.
Cause he's allowed to grow seedlings, he's allowed to grow mature. And he's allowed to do that within any season that he can inside that, uh.
Correct, but it also has with it, but it also has with the parameters of the canopy that are allowed, et cetera, so, right? I mean, we're not, we're not expecting within a, within about thirty-five hundred and sixty square feet for him to have the equivalent of, uh, fifty thousand. Square feet of, uh, plants in there, multi-layered, et cetera.
Right, that's why you can make this a minor change, because you're just saying our previous permit stands as written with a few agreeable minor modification.
Correct.
You're not changing your original permit.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so what we, so again, to restate my amendment, cause nobody's seconded it, let's try to, try this one more time. So, we've got the original, it's a modification to a special permit. And has to be located at the site shown on the plan that he just presented. And then the additional terms we're adding to the motion are cultivation limited to. Seedlings and overall marijuana cultivation allowed in special, previously allowed by special permit.
Which is allowed in our, the existing special permit.
Right. And then, uh, irrigation.
Oh, like.
Through a drip system, no chemical storage, no artificial grow lights.
What, one, if I may, it, there, I think I heard earlier, it is, uh, I think there's, there's a manual irrigation. Except for those cases where the grow, the growth in the future would utilize, in the future I would assume would be for mature plants, that's when we would, that's when he would use, uh, uh, irrigation. And then there's no grow lights.
Okay, so let's try to get this right, cultivation of seedlings through manual irrigation. And.
Yes.
Um.
And mature plants.
And, and, and mature, mature plants in greenhouse. Um, grown in greenhouse cannot add to previous to canopy area allowed in special permit.
Right.
Um, and then.
You added.
Would that do it?
You added the lights.
And then no chemical storage in this greenhouse and no artificial grow lights.
And no lights.
Right.
Okay, do we have it all?
Madam Chair, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
I'll accept the friend, friendly amendment to the motion.
This is a, vote, vote on the amendment, so he's, France.
Gotcha, if I, I second that.
Okay, okay. Okay, and also all in favor of the amendment, Lipton, I?
Holman's eye.
And Francois, I, and then all in favor of the original motion as amended.
Holman's eye.
Tiger, I.
And Lipton, I, okay.
All right.
I wanna say publicly, uh, David, I, we, we just wanna make sure that things are done in a correct manner, okay? You may think that we're, we're against this, that's not the case. We are, we're accountable to the population of our town of Hubbardston, uh, they're asking elections. Wanna make sure that we are all above boards in terms of what we're actually allowing to do here. And you, we do wish you success, because your success is the town's success also.
Right, right.
From our perspective, again, we gotta make sure that we are doing this, the same thing as if a liquor store or a new business comes into town. As rules of regulation, we wanna make sure that everything is properly correctly, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Damon, okay, we're coming, great, on to the next item.
B E S.
Which is the battery energy storage system, um. By law, which we are hopefully going to have, it's already been advertised for a public hearing in our next meeting, which is three-three. Part of the problem of, of trying to get these, these things on the agenda for the public hearing is there's quite a lead time by the time you get it published. And you get it into the meeting, and we're up against a closing deadline for the warrant of April eleventh. So, some of this got advertised without the polish being on it, but I think this one actually, and I'll check with Mallory, it, actually. The one that was published represents the, and the, and I think it's in our minutes, the actual final product, right? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so again.
I, I.
Good.
I, I was gonna say, that one I did see in the, uh.
Document?
I did see that in the, uh, uh, in the February twenty-four, uh, folder.
Great, great, okay.
And I'm assuming, I am, I'm assuming that's, I'm just a little bit confused, I did wanna mention this here, because it is the proposal, it says proposal, December two, two twenty twenty-one. I have not read it, because I saw it, it was uploaded today at three oh eight. Uh, I'm assuming however, that's the latest greatest, that includes not only those changes that.
Right.
Uh, Bill and the, uh, electrical engineer have, have put together, but also the amendments and changes that you had proposed, Alice, Madam Chair.
Yes, I think it, it is there, it is, it has some color coding in it. And I, yeah, okay.
Oh, I opened this from Google Drive.
And I apologize, I cannot, I cannot open that document, because it is in a, I, I guess it's in some format that I'm not allowed to open. If somebody could please, um, upload a PDF version of this here, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, I can try, so the laptop I'm working on doesn't give me all the options that I have at the computer at work, or probably back Monday, so if I don't get it done this week, I'll get it done Monday.
Not, not a problem, not a rush, it's just that I, I am not, I'm, when I open it up, there's a lot of gibberish in there, I cannot read it.
We, we, tonight is, this is different, and when, then we're not voting to put it on the warrant, we're voting to, that would be. You know, after the public hearing, right?
No, it's just that, so that, we, we have the latest.
Right, but this is the, I'll make sure that you have the right one, um.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, I apologize, there is, there, there's a folder which has, which says P E S S, and then there's a separate file. That, I think that's the one that we're going to be using anyway, it's the best version two dash one dash twenty-two A K L in places, right?
That's the one I opened, I have on my computer here, yes. Article twenty-three.
We accepted all those changes.
Does that include all your changes, Alice?
Uh, uh, flip through it very quick, I think it does, I think it does, I see the zoning bylaws, and I'm trying to look at.
Ruin on the definitions.
Definitions, abandonment, green is the, yep, yep. Article two.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we do, I think this is, all, I think the only difference between that one that shows, that Bill's looking at, which shows the. The final revisions is that. Uh, you know, I've accepted them and eliminated the color coding, printed it in black, but it does look like it has everything.
Now do you wanna go through?
We'll publish it again, yeah, okay.
Make sure that we have a, I'm sorry.
Accepted, yes, C, where, what's that, is that on page two?
It's right at the bottom of page one, I think, either at the top of page two, top of page two.
C, yeah, C.
The Building Commission determines that insufficient or incomplete maintenance upkeep, monitoring or reporting has occurred which may create a public hazard or nuisance.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Then it's a comma.
Yeah, and it has the footnotes, which were the very last thing added, the footnote adjustment, so this is correct, okay. Um, all right, so, again, for the, the sake of the public, I think we should talk about, this has been evolving. But there are some significant changes that were made with this last round as a result of Francois's work and my work and Bill's work. So I wanna sort of walk through, walk through some of it, it's long, it's thirteen pages, I don't intend read definitions. But, um, but I would just like to hit the highlights of this, to tell people that are listening, there will be a public hearing on this. Um, on, at the next meeting, and it is our intention to have this as a warrant article.
And there's nobody else here, I think.
So, yeah, but people turn in, they listen to it.
Right, right.
Okay, so, um, so anyway, uh, I guess the first major change is, or, uh, there's, I don't know exactly what point along the line it was made. But this by law only applies to tier-two grid scale battery energy storage systems. Which we're abbreviating G S for grid system and B E S, which is the universal sort of abbreviation for battery energy storage systems. Okay, so these tier-two grid scale battery energy storage systems that are connected to the public utility grid. For use in supplementing the public energy supply. Um, and there, those are the only ones that above the, the six hundred kilowatt hour systems that are allowed in Hubbardston. At the moment, through this, the ones that aren't regulated, the six hundred kilowatt hour and below. Um, private industry could have, it will still generate a lot of power and we don't regulate it, doesn't mean you wouldn't have to get a building permit for it. But it's not covered by this bylaw, so I just wanna make that really clear. So then some other things that are quite important is, um. These are, um, yeah, I sort of, these are located on perci- uh, participating properties. And what they do is, uh, enable the power system operators to store energy. Which is then fed back into the grid at a later time, generally to supplement peak energy supply. And to power, provide power when portions of the grid are out. Um, and it's very important, I think, for the public to also realize that this is part of an initiative to, um. You know, part of the green, greener energy system that the state's working for and the federal government is working for. But it, it does, uh, cre- create some income opportunity for the people willing to cite these units. But our concern is that if they're cited, there'd be, they'd be cited and dedicate safely, and so they're not applied on the landscape. Um, and, you know, the buildings are all correct, so that's why it's such a long bylaw, cause it's kind of a technical field. But you can read it, all the definitions, I'm not gonna go through it, they have to be cited by a special permit. And they can only be located in the commercial dis, the commercial zone district. Um, or within large-scale, uh, solar photovoltaic installations. Of which we presently have one that has a best system in it on Williamsville Road. And all of them are likely to be the solar systems, both the built ones and the existing ones are likely to take advantage of this special permit application. Because they can basically not quite double the output of their solar field, but almost. Because they store, uh, the energy generated during the day. Uh, and they can feed it at night, so they can actually put twice the amount of energy, uh, back into the grid. Uh, so I'm sure that these changes will be coming, okay, so, just walking through.
I have one, uh.
Yes?
One, one quick comment, there is, I believe, I'm taking the existing version that you have out there, and it's, you go to section five, subsection H. The best size limit still indicates it's two megawatts, and I believe we did agree that it is going to be ten megawatts.
That's right.
Oh, that's right, so this is wrong.
Can I ask a question?
I have it in my notes.
Just to point that out, I, it's left over from.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
First of all, I, and I don't understand, I don't know everything about the technology, you folks have been working really hard on this. Is there anything in this bylaw, I didn't see anything? Is there anything in this bylaw, I didn't see anything, that it could be modified, so if the technology changes over the years. Where they can actually harness more energy, can they increase this number of megawatts? To allow them to do that, but also allow the town to, to, um, get the higher value.
It would require, it, it would require modification of the bylaw, because of the way it is actually, uh, it, the way it is codified in the bylaw. It is, it is a maximum output is, at this point, not a maximum, a maximum storage is, is, uh, stipulated in the bylaw.
Is that, is that stipulated by the technology?
I mean, I, I, I struggled with that myself.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, interupted you, is that part of their technology, cause, um, or should this be limited, or just?
No, no, the, what. Why, why are we limiting, I mean, this is, right now, it's quite frankly, it's a compromise, given the existing, given the existing technology and giving, given the. Exis- stage that we are in, and we're leaving it at ten megawatts, which we thought would be sufficient for the areas that we are certainly considering. Uh, can that change in the future? Yes, but it would require a, um, it would require modification of the bylaw, and therefore would have to go also through town. Uh, through the town, uh, meeting.
My, my question though is, um, as tech- technology is really changing a lot, and we're really hindering companies coming here. That if they could go to another, somewhere else, they could actually get in there quicker and modify the, not the bylaw, but the, not the permit.
I'm, 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 I'm not disputing that, I'm, I'm not disputing that, it, it was interesting, I mean, today I was just reading and, and hearing about this very interesting technology that uses. Rust, believe it or not.
Rust?
It's iron rust, uh, which is the new, it's the new, new battery technology, and these, uh, kids from MIT have, uh, they're actually, they're up in New Hampshire. And they're, it's either in New Hampshire or somewhere here in, in, in Massachusetts, they're, they're coming up with this. Very, very, very interesting technology, which basically uses what is known as rust batteries, and.
Wow.
The amount of storage of energy that they can potentially utilize it, or harness it, I should say, in the future is, is totally amazing. I think that based on where we are at this point in time, this is a good starting point. Uh, where we can put something on the ground and get started, I think if anything, we're probably, we're, we're probably one of the very first few towns that's gonna be. You know, codifying this here in terms of bylaw, but I think more importantly, it gives us sort of like the taste where we can move forward.
My, my only suggest.
And if the town sees the benefit of this here, we can certainly, uh, propose modifications to this here.
My only question was, could we leave part of this here so that planning board could actually look at it without opening the whole process again? If the technology changes quickly as it has been in the last quite a few years, would it make sense to have something here? So, it can't happen over, it could, it can't happen just to let it happen, but the planning board could actually have a way to increase it, if, if the technology. Made, so that they were making more power in a safe way. I just don't wanna limit it so much.
Can I, can I, no, no, I, 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 I hear you, and I, you, you present a very interesting point here.
Okay.
Uh, and the question, I think the, the question really is. Who makes the determination as to the maximum capacity of a particular resource that you are going to allow? Uh, the, to be placed in the town of Hubbardston? Let's say, for example, when it comes to the solar, uh, uh, we made the point some years ago about the fact that, uh, as solar panels become more efficient. You can potentially get a lot more power in a s- in, in, with, within the solar panel itself, and the same thing is happening here. The question is, is, do we have to go back within the parameters of the bylaw to the town folks and request an increase? Say, for example, this, and I'm just saying it's a marginal increase, let's say, for example, from ten thousand to, to, to eleven thousand. Versus, you know, a doubling from ten thousand to, to twenty thousand within the same acreage. Where do we, where do we draw the line as to, wh- when, when is it the townsfolk have the right to say no? Or, or yes, right? And, 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 and that, that is, that is, that is, that is a problem. I don't think we, we as, as, as a planning board necessarily have, uh, full. Uh, the full, the full capability of making that determination.
And I totally agree with you, Francois.
Bill, I don't know if you've seen anything else in other towns, uh, with regards to this here.
Well, the way I think it's usually framed is, you're framing it not from this model, you're framing it from the impact on the. And public health, safety, and welfare. So, if we allow a twenty thousand megawatt battery, what is the size of the footprint that could reasonably be inferred today? And what would the impact be on a lot existing in the commercial district? And that's, that's the framing, the business model is, is somebody else's issue really. Yours is health, safety, and welfare, and to the benefit of the community.
So.
And I agree, and I agree with that.
If I can just weigh in for one second.
No.
There are. I know, I've been talking the whole time, I, uh, I, I just wanted to, to say. The, the reason is, I'm looking at this from, I looked at this bylaw from a zoning perspective, and it's my understanding. That a commercial, uh, if you take, uh, a shipping container, could hold. For ten megawatts, I know they compress more and more all the time, but it would be somewhere between. Two and four shipping containers to put that ten megawatts, right? So, and then each of those, you can put them fairly close together, but there does need to be a clearance zone around them, and a fence around them, and, okay. So our, and these can, and this is what can fit on our existing minimal lot size. So, two acres, two hundred feet of frontage, and it just seems to me that, that that, that's roughly the size of. You know, on two acres, you know, a house and a garage and a something that would actually, you could get your good buffers in, you could hide it, right? So, I think, I mean, the alternative is, from my point of view, is, is you could go to a sliding scale. But the future is, is that those four units are gonna be able to compress maybe twenty megawatts in ten years, right? So you don't, that isn't a very good answer either, but you could do that, you say, hey, hey, you got a five acre lot, you can build up to, you know, it's, it, there's a screening.
My biggest question is here, I don't, I don't wanna give anybody a free entry into this bylaw so they can do whatever they want. All I'm saying is, can we allow, as a planning board on this special permit. Any mo- modification as the technology changes, as time goes on by, when our rust battery guys get it really even better. Um, can we modify what we're doing here tonight to accommodate that? So if it gets better in five, ten years from now, this bylaw is gonna limit whatever you can put on this. I don't know if we could word this in such a way that it can be reviewed by the planning board with the technology coming in, and our professional. Reviewer, Bill Murray, whoever it is, could look at it and provide us with the information saying, you know what, we have these on a, on. We have this size now, which our bylaw approves of, but now the technology has changed, we could just modify a little bit of the bylaw to allow them. To increase what they're doing, which is a, within the guidelines of the industry today. That's all I'm saying, I don't wanna limit as they go on.
You can do that, um, I think what you do is you take out the maximum capacity. And you, you then establish a criteria, very much like the solar bylaw has now, where it cannot be viewed. From the neighboring parcels, shall not create a fire hazard, shall not create a hazard, so you do a citing bylaw as opposed to a capacity bylaw.
That was my biggest thing when I read this, I just don't wanna constrain the industry in.
No, it's a very good comment.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's an excellent comment, yeah, the way I was thinking, I was thinking is in terms of the enclosure capacity, right, that you can have on, on per acre.
Yeah.
Which I think, becomes, it's similar to what Bill is basically stating here. Um, so here's, here's my suggestion. I don't, I, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about us making some major modifications by going that route. And, uh, I think we have something at hand which is workable, I do not expect that people are gonna be coming and knocking down the doors and saying, I wanna put. You know, my ten megawatt system here, or my twelve megawatt system, but I can't, as you're only allowing me to, to, to the ten, I think ten is, ten is adequate. I, I'd like to suggest that, like, with what we think we have a good solid bylaw, obviously making the change from two megawatts to, 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 to ten megawatts, however. We do have an opportunity, as we have already also discussed for the solar bylaw, uh, to make some modifications. And learn from our lessons, and if necessary, I think that come two thousand twenty three. We can take that approach which Bill has stated, or take the approach of looking at it from. Maximum enclosures of certain dimensions within a, within an acreage in a commercial zone. And use that as a criteria by which we're measuring, then you take away the total, uh, baggage of, uh, megawatts. So, yes, in the future, if something comes in where, where, where fifteen megawatts is, 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 is doable within the same capacity, or twenty, or fifty, whatever that is. Uh, as long as you keep the safety requirements, as long as you keep the citing requirements, it's liberal, then I think we have something that we can work with. But I wanna get something on the books, because I do believe this is gonna be happening, especially after the last, this, this past couple of days. Things that are happening in the world, uh, I think the, 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 the thriving of, uh, the, uh, the, the, I'm sorry, the push in the area of. Alternative energy is gonna come very, very much more to the front store forefront, and, uh. Battery energy storage is gonna be a very important element on, on how do we do this successfully. That's just my thought. I don't know, Bill, if you, if, if, Bill Holman's, I mean, are you, do you understand my thought process, I mean, here we are on.
And, and I do, Francois, I'm just, if we could mo- I agree with what Bill Murray stipulated, you, you don't think that would keep everything in compliance with what you're trying to do otherwise with the bylaw? I just don't wanna.
I, I do, my concern here, my concern here is, is that, you know, April is coming by soon. This bylaw has been worked on quite, quite a lot, and I'm not sure that, I, I'm just concerned that are we gonna be able to get this thing done before the third of March?
If we make this modification tonight to change that a little bit, would that, you're, you're think, you're saying that it would hold it up, and we, we wouldn't get it approved in time, is that what you're saying?
I think citing would.
Or remember that, that, we have a special permit, uh, oh, I'm sorry, we have a, I'm sorry, we have a, uh, we have a hearing coming up, uh, on the third of March, which is only a week and a half away, right?
You don't think we could make any changes before that, is that, is that what you're saying?
I think you.
I, I'm concerned that we will not necessarily have everything ready, and.
Okay.
One concern that I bring up here is, is, I mean, we did already bring Bill and the, uh, the, the electrical engineer expert into play here. And I don't know if this would open up a requirement for us to redo that.
Well, uh, the, with an hearing, yeah, is this something we could do in the near future if we wanted to, we can modify this, we'd have, we'd have to go through the whole process again though, right?
We have to do solar fields this year coming up, we have a grant to do it.
Okay.
So, and I had originally, when I applied for that grant, well, through M R P C, I said, this is what we wanna do.
Right.
And they, and they submitted the application, but they had put in battery energy storage.
Okay.
So I said, well, we're gonna do it separate, because we don't wanna wait two more years for this, you know?
Right, right, okay, so that'd be a good.
So next year would be our chance to revisit it.
That's great.
I think that, I think that's right, don't you think, Bill?
I think that makes sense, then, to do.
It would be a logical revisit.
Yeah, well, I think what's, Francois's saying, this is a good, we should go forward with that.
I did mean to put the ten in here, this was just a. You know, it's, yeah, I'm sorry, but anyway, it is a ten mil, ten megawatts, and a ten megawatts per lot site. And what we had had this big discussion about was that this is a size that was needed to in- to interest utility companies in doing it, right?
Okay.
The citing, and it's enough, um, to supplement peak demand for several hours a day. Um, uh. For, or to power sixteen hundred homes for an outage of several hours.
Right.
So, it's not an insignificant amount. Um, anyway, and it would fit into two to four dedicated use. Uh, shipping sized container buildings at the moment, but I do realize it's gonna be compressed, and likely will be able to do more than that. So to the pub, the other people listening out there, um, I don't know that we actually have to go through much of this tonight, because we are gonna go through it on the third. But anyway, there would be a dedicated use building, um, you, they would be a setback two hundred feet from the road, they would have seventy five yard. Setbacks from neighboring properties, and you, the, the cleared area around them in the fencing, uh, can't be located in the standard commercial zone setbacks. Um, they would need to have a special permit, an environmental and community impact analysis, a site, and site plan approval. Uh, they would have to produce evidence that the public utility there is approved, the, you know, connection capacity is available. Um, in the grid, there'd be a noise analysis. Um, there would be minimal lighting, again, we're trying to protect the dark skies. Um, there would be significant limits on tree cutting and vegetation, and particularly in any setbacks. There is a fencing requirement, it's a pretty high fence, it's a seven foot fence, so it can't be put on the property line, it's gotta be set on the other side of the setbacks. We have screening and visibility, as we minimize the extent practical, we've thought about noise, there must be a noise, uh, study. And, um, there is a de- decommissioning bond that would be held. Um. And there's also an abandonment, uh, procedure, which is defined as non-use and compliance for at least six months. And this does have a certificate to generate requirement before they can actually, it has to be issued. Uh, as a final part of the permitting process. And they would submit annual reports, just like our solar fields do. Anyway, that's a short, short summary of it.
But, but in this case with some teeth in it, right?
Yes, I know, we're still chasing it. Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
I was saying, we're still chasing the, the reports from the solar fields, too.
I was gonna say that too, yeah.
No, I, I, I would just say, in this, in this particular case, we put some teeth in, in, in our reporting here for this, uh, for the battery energy storage system.
Right.
Yes, it's, it's better. Okay, so we'll take it up on the third, and I will get those corrections in, I'll make sure it's correctly posted. Um, right away, and if there's corrections to what's on the line posting with that two megawatts to ten, I'll make sure it's corrected. Um, we had significant help writing this bylaw. From Bill, an electrical engineer, uh, consultant that he works with, and we had appropriated, I believe, um. Three thousand dollars to get this done, and the bill came in at two thousand nine forty five twenty five, so I would like to make a motion to. Approve, a motion to approve, um, get a motion made to approve Places Associates Bill.
I'd like to make the motion to Places Association, asso- associates, sorry. For the bill that was, um, submitted for twenty nine hundred forty five dollars and twenty five cents for the work they did on the ba- battery story, storage.
Bylaw, right, yeah.
Bylaw, thank you.
What's.
I second the mo- what.
Any discussion, hearing none, Lipton, all, yes?
Holman's eye.
I, I, I.
We did, we did at the same time.
Yep.
The Holman's eye.
Okay, everybody's.
Second, right.
Okay, so that's great, so we're, we're closing in on it here, it's eight o'clock, that's not too bad. Um, a few announcements, we do, we do need to, and I'll Mallory's back, we, I will get, Mallory, don't. Forget that we do need to find out where the solar field reports stand, okay?
Yes.
So I want to do that by next time. Um, we did, I did get under correspondence, I did get, uh, the environmental notification form for the Main Street Route, uh, Route sixty eight improvement project. And I did, um. So if you have concerns about that, you can review the, the documents submitted on that through the Town Center Committee. Um, they're posted, I believe, online.
They are.
The building will take place in September, they hope. The, uh, the actual repaving and construction. I wanna, on the affordable housing, we're making progress on fundraising. Um, the local share of the house, for the house on Ragged Hill, we've raised just about fifteen thousand now. Um, we are gonna fall short of our original goal because of the, basically the restrictions of having fundraisers during COVID. But they did, um, Habitat for Humanity North Central Mass put in another C P A application. Um, for twenty five thousand, which would close the gap, and if we succeed in, we do have fundraisers going, may, you know, we don't have to use all of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, they got the approval from the, uh, C P, the Community Preservation Committee. Yeah, all out of affordable housing funds, so we didn't take anything out of the general funds.
Oh, good.
Uh, so, we've been slow to spend affordable housing funds in years past.
Right.
So that money is there and available. So that money is there and available, and I hope you all come to town meeting and support it. If you'd like to, we are the Affordable Housing Committee, so if you've got time on Saturday morning, March fifth at ten AM, go out and see the Habitat House. There's a mid-build um ceremony, and you can add best wishes to the person that's moving in on the beams.
Mm-hmm.
That they put in the walls, it's kind of a nice ceremony. Um and the the woman that is moving in is is a single mom with four kids, she's been chosen. Two of her kids still live with her full time, and two will be going to Hubbardston Center School, and one, one of the children is handicapped. So we're adding handicap, it is a handicapped accessible house anyway, that's the way Habitat builds, but this will have a ramp as well. So that's kind of an update on that, um.
Francois was trying to say.
Francois, what?
Sorry.
I know, it's saying great, very beautiful that that's been done that way.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a very deserving woman, um who's very excited and she's, you know, they have to put in sweat equity, she's there working. Um there are more work opportunities, if you wanna offer a few hours of time, you sign up on the website and go down uh next week, and this, well, this week's gone.
This week too, yeah.
Um administrative matters, I I just wanna say on administrative matters, Mallory, have you heard anything from Lori about the progress on updating the zoning bylaws? I know we finally got a letter from the AG's office admitting to the confusion, you know?
I know, her and Ryan are working on it, and I've been on for two weeks, I really don't know if anything's been been said.
Cause I, cause I'd really like to be able to wrap it up before the third, cause there'll be a whole nother raft of changes, right, coming in after town meeting. And I think what happens is they don't get updated every year, then things get skipped and they don't get updated and.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could ask her for me, see if we could get that done um for the third, that'd be great, and I'll try to send her a note too. All right, that is about all I have, anybody, oh, I did talk to our, I tried to reach uh VBH about the um EHB. Right. Anyway, this is feasibility study for lot fifty-seven, and I'm expecting a callback, but I didn't get hold of John Furman, cause I placed the call too late. Um that's it, anything else, anybody wants to add? Any members of the public out there waiting to say something? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, Alice.
Yes.
You have someone out there.
Yes.
Um hold on, you have Rick Jones and Susan Worth, I just put on them to the cameras.
Okay, I know them, yeah. Rick and Susan.
I'm muted.
They're muted. So this is our public comment, our public comment period two, which we have at the end of the meeting, and what would you like to tell us?
We're good there.
All right, folks, well, I uh I recently became aware of the disapproval of the uh rate of development bylaw by the Attorney General and uh and read the letter. Um and uh under, I understand what the uh what the issue that you mentioned ago, a minute ago, was that uh it's confusing. But um my, I just had a question uh that you may not, or may not be able to answer here tonight, uh but I would like to have, be able to look into it a little further. And if the uh rate of development bylaw expansion is not gonna be allowed and is removed from uh from the warrant. Uh I'd like to find out what other means of controlling uh we have available in town so that we don't end up with uh, you know, massive influx of development.
Basically what.
Similar to what's happened in Rutland.
Yeah. Um this, it's a pretty firm line in the sand from the AG, they say you need to demonstrate that. That you, the the only sis- the only conditions under which they approve these growth controls, so many unit limits, is if you have like a school that's over capacity. Or a s- a sewage treatment plant that's over capacity, or some, some other, you know, need that that a municipality has to provide. That's really being strained and you can't provide it. Um and actually, I mean, the difference between here in Hubbardston, or here in Rutland, is Rutland has a much smaller zoning um footprint. I think it's a hundred and fifty feet of range and an acre maybe, ours is two and two hundred, two s- two acres and two hundred.
Mm-hmm, two hundred.
Uh two acres and two hundred square feet, right, sorry. So um and they may go after that too, I don't know. Um I think one of the things we can do to. We could make better use of is our, and probably revise, would be our cluster zone. You know, if you really, I know you're on the Open Space Committee, you wanna preserve it, right? Is to try to figure out how you can, you know, make, put more units in less land without necessarily changing the lot size. Uh and that continues to be a problem, and I'm not unsympathetic to open space, but we have three percent subsidized housing units. So where's, every municipality is supposed to have ten percent. So we're under pressure from sort of both sides here, but I don't think it's an easy fix. You have to have a good excuse to limit growth under the present, at the present time, under the present administration rules. So unless you can think of something that is really under pressure, the other thing is, if you're rezoning, which the first one was granted. Actually, that has been the rule, that you need a good reason for a long time, but this bylaw has sort of sat there, and it was, it's just renewed every five years. So really, the AG, it slipped through the cracks last year, and then when the, or last time it was up, six years ago. And just they weren't willing to do it this time, originally, when it was passed twenty years ago, it was passed because they were doing the master plan. Which is, and they said, well, we need the time to plan, planning is one of the reasons you can ask for more time. And the AG, cause he was quite pointed in his decision, you've had twenty years to plan, why are we still doing, you know? So ironically, we're now in another master plan, and we're actually looking at some of these issues, but I don't see another way to actually control the growth. Unless one of our, we have a s- a a strain on one of the public services that we provide. I don't know.
How is that mea- how is, how does that kind of, let's take schools as an example, how is that measured? I mean, let's say uh instead of uh uh East Quabon Land Trust and the DRC buying Fieldstone Farm, that two hundred fifty acres. Hopper came in there and and wanted to put in, you know, three hundred uh, a three hundred housing development in there. It, you know, that's the kind of thing that I'm I'm worried, I guess. Uh I am fully in support of subsidized housing, um and cluster housing would be a a good way to do that. And maybe, maybe if we got really creative, um we could combine uh cluster housing with some additional open space around it, that kind of thing. But uh I, right now, I'm just asking in general, do we have any other means of of uh controlling growth in a reasonable way?
Yeah.
So that we're not all of a sudden opening the gates to uh large developments that w- that would conceivably overwhelm our school system or public services, et cetera. And I thi- I think what I hear you saying is we really don't have any means other than the lot size and frontage. Is that, am I correct in that?
That's my understanding of that reading, and our public's, and that, like, for example, our school has a capacity limit, right, that it was built for.
Mm-hmm.
And in the nineties, which is what, really why the select board was so passionate about keeping this bylaw, in the nineties, it got overcrowded. And they wound up with double shifts and extra people on the buses and, you know, so you can keep a lid on it, but right now, the school population is down thirty percent, or it's way down.
Plus they're using it for the athlete.
So it i- it is a problem, I don't know, I mean, you could, we can ask Bill, is there, do you have other communities that put a size limit on subdivisions? You.
Um uh, well, the, the, if you have a two hundred fifteen acre project, you can't get three hundred houses, cause a lot is too big for minimum. Uh and we have some pretty stringent subdivision requirements. The other point I wanted to make was, we had a threshold in the growth rate bylaw and where it kicks in. And I don't think we've reached that threshold in fifteen years. There's been no interest to develop the Hubbardston, and it's not really comparable to Rutland, because they have public sewer and water, and they have some pretty good soils. And we don't, we don't have good soils except for in the northwest part of the town, and we have a massive amount of DCR controlled land. There isn't a whole lot of interest to come to Hubbardston for developers at this time, because it's a heck of a lot easier to develop than Westminster. And other Templeton, Rutland, Olden, all those towns, because they have public sewer and water. Will that change? Sure, that'll change eventually, uh but there, Hubbardston is not an attractive development town at this point in time. I moved in in the nineties, when Hubbardston was the fastest growing town in in Worcester County, but we haven't seen that since then. But there is very little that we can do to uh the two acre, two hundred foot frontage, the State Supreme Court has said, you can't go bigger than that. Because it's now you're trying to grab land and just restrict growth. Uh so the short story is that the the AG is is beating down this particular issue.
Okay.
Rick, I I would tell you, yep, I just wanted to say, the growth limit for for building permits in that bylaw was twenty-eight units.
Just to.
And the most we've ever had built was twelve, except for last year, twenty twenty-one, there were eighteen. But I think it was because there were only like six in twenty twenty due to the COVID situation. So we really have never hit that cap, ever, close to it.
No, I'm aware of that, Alice.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm aware that that is the um, but the part of it is uh there was a limitation on the number of permits per uh single builder. Uh that could be led in a year is.
Three.
It was five.
Yep.
Is that correct?
You can, you can, you can do that, um I'm doing a project right now in Hubbardston. And the way they stated is, the projects over a certain size, you can only build twenty percent of the project in a single year. Our regulated, our subdivision, actually, that's a zoning, our zoning regulations don't say that. But there is an upper limit, I think it's for projects of twenty or more lots, so that there's a justification on over- overloading schools, utilities and infrastructure.
Okay.
There already is.
And how about cul- is there a stipulation in the uh bylaws about the cul-de-sacs? Um and 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 the uh how they're permitted to be built or planned?
Yeah, there, there always is the length of a dead end, and uh the the logic behind the length of a dead end on the cul-de-sac. Is generally, the way it's applied is, if there's an accident at the beginning of the cul-de-sac where it connects to a, an adjacent road. How long is the hose and the pump capacity of a fire truck to fight a fire? So if they have to drag five hundred feet of hose, can they power up that hose and fight a fire with a house at the end of the cul-de-sac? So that's the logic behind that. But there is, there is a a length limitation, so, but I've said all of this, and there's a big asterisk on all of this, so that you have to be very clear. If a forty B comes into town tonight, that's not gonna happen in the foreseeable future, in my opinion. A forty B takes all of our local zoning and essentially says, if it derivates from the goal of affordable housing. The zoning board of appeals can waive all of the requirements of the zoning board and and the planning board.
Which is one of the main reasons that we are harping on making sure that we are meeting the goals of the uh.
Right.
For housing in the town of Hubbardston.
If we reach ten percent affordable housing, uh then then you can't bring a forty B into town.
How many more homes would we have to get?
Hubbardston still is not a forty B town.
There's easier places.
Yeah, we're just not an attractive place to put a forty B.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that, um.
Okay.
But, well, I'm just, just a quick thought, without the cap of the twenty-eight, I think I'm hearing that the leaders that are responsible for this. Are feeling that they, the the rules that we have in place currently will maintain the rural character in a reasonable way. Is that what I think I'm hearing from you folks for the various reasons that we don't have sewer and blah blah blah, right? But then the four, that's to be proactive, to combine maybe open space with a cluster housing would do a lot for our ten percent. You said we're at three percent, Alice, did I get that right?
We're, yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, we're supposed, I can't remember right offhand, I think, well, how many hu- units do we have?
Even with the new Habitat?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's way off, it's ten, ten percent, and our only affordable units in town are, are one new Habitat house will be. The group homes and um the senior housing over at.
Old Presley Road.
What is it, Old Presley, yeah, what's the name of it, Hubbardston House.
Hub House.
Hubbardston House has about, yeah, so we are over a hundred units behind. But we, we, I'm really serious about trying to get senior units built in the old gravel pit lot, and hopefully.
Yeah.
We could, you know, get thirty or forty units in there, which would be immediately u- used, but it's a, you know, it's a process. And it also has the lack of.
Which is state aid and so forth, I mean, that's a big project.
It's a big project, yeah.
If we're proactive with this, it's a win-win-win, right?
Yep, yep, well, we're working on it.
So that should be a goal, or even a smaller, like, double duplex? Because we were just at a a workshop at this, today, noon, and they were talking about the equity issue. And un- under these communities, by far, there's access to open space. So what about combining those two things, and they, they said that, they used the term cluster housing, as you did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think if we could focus on that, we'd be.
We we have a cluster bylaw, we have a cluster bylaw, and the point of a cluster bylaw is, the lot that the house sits on is, it has to, in Hubbardston, it has to be an acre, and that, lots of reasons why. But our normal lot is two hundred feet of frontage and two acres of land. So if you, you have a cluster, you get a hundred feet of frontage and an acre of land, and then you you pack land as open, common, open space, and that's the point of a cluster. And we do have a bylaw that that addresses that, it's just um, in Hubbardston, there's no benefit for a con- a developer to do that.
At this time, yes.
Because it. At this time.
There's no bonus units.
Well, what we could do is, we could write into the, and what a lot of towns do is, you get bonus lots. So if you're gonna do a cluster, we're gonna give you more lots than you're allowed under zoning, but those bonus lots, half of those bonus lots have to be affordable. Or as a percentage of those bonus lots, you can't do all of the bonus lots as affordable, cause there's no reason for them to do that. So it has to work in their monetary thing, so there, there are a lot of workarounds, and we haven't caught up to it, because Hubbardston is not yet attractive town, cause we don't have current public order.
Well, it's interesting that you should say that, and I'm almost done, I know it's been long, quite a lot of things that you had to get through tonight. Um but there was an article in the Gram and Gazette, zip code zero one four five two, Hubbardston offers residents high-quality services at an affordable price. And then it went on to say, town management, low taxes, a lot of open space, all the wonderful things that we enjoy and we wanna share, but it should be controlled growth. I mean, you know, we want, I think there's ways if we're proactive, that everybody can, we can preserve our rural character and still some affordable housing and more open space, that so. Anyway, it's just, Alice, since you're on on several of these committees, it uh, we're working. We're, we can demonstrate that we're working toward that goal, like, I think, because my sister lives in a town where a forty B, they're still in court back and forth, it's a mess, because they weren't proactive. And um and not that forty B's bad, but it, you don't put up a hotel-looking thing in Lancaster. Lancaster is similar to Hubbardston in many ways, and it just, it's a mess, so just saying.
I do think.
You want that to have to happen here.
One of the good things about, uh, one of the things that you gain by having, not having the growth bylaw the way it was written. You know, I spent hours and hours rewriting it to try to keep it, but make it more uh affordable housing friendly. But one of the things I think that present, and then they threw the whole, the whole thing out, was thrown out. Actually, they threw out our extension of that bylaw, and they threw it out in such a way that the way I had rewritten it wasn't gonna pass muster either. But one of the things we had in that bylaw is we limited to the number of permits a developer could have, could get in a year. Which I think shuts down to, it was very limited, it was, I think, five for, I'm gonna think of what it was.
Yeah.
Five.
Five for for contractor.
And one, and um, you know, if you're doing a cluster development. And one, and, um, you know, if you're doing a cluster development, it, it, there was not much incentive there, you know, because if you're building houses that, you know, where you have to put the roads in, right? Or if you wanted to build, like, townhouse units, townhouses, attached townhouses, some duplexes, you know, townhouse. Every, each one of those is a separate unit, so it was very limited in terms of what, of that kinda housing you'd get, because the builder would say, well, I'm not gonna wait till next year to build the third townhouse. You know, in that little place that would allow three of them, so there's some good and bad in it, but, um, but basically, it's unconstitutional, so, I, our hands are tied, you know? And in terms of taking that approach, we need other approaches.
I just, just leave you with an aside, uh, just currently, the Open Space Committee is working on developing a set of criteria for targeting, uh, to start with, just Chapter sixty-one lands in town, uh, since town has right of first refusal on those, but, but just, uh, highlighting all the potential, uh, available land that could be converted to open space, and maybe one of the criteria having there is the ability to use it for, um, some type of, uh, subsidized housing clusters, or, you know, combination of the open space and, and subsidized housing development, so, that's something I'll, I'll bring up when we have our meeting next week on that.
Yeah, you gotta be ready to jump on those, because they do have to come, but the town doesn't get very long to decide. You know, if they have an option, right, so, it's, right, so you gotta have a plan, yeah, that's, that's worth doing.
And that's, that's the purpose for, yeah, that's the purpose for, uh, developing a criteria, identify, then we can identify, we already have identified all the properties in town, uh, that are open, whether they be, you know, privately owned, Chapter sixty-one, et cetera, et cetera, so,
Yeah.
the, the next step is to figure out which ones we can target, uh, approach the, uh, the landowners and, and talk to them about potentially putting them in Chapter sixty-one, or or other means, but, um, but, so that's part two, is, is target, is developing that criteria, so that we can take a look at the, uh, the properties we've identified and, and figure out what makes sense to look at closer, so.
Well, bring it, bring it to us, as the Affordable Housing Committee, you know, on the planning board here, and we're interested, definitely. Okay, well, thanks for coming and staying.
Yes.
Any further, uh, comments from anybody, or anybody out in the wings that I haven't seen, Mallory?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, so, I think it's, we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, Lipton, all eye?
Holman's eye.
Your eye.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
We stand adjourned till-